We will call the names on one of the fields. The board of directors, all members are present. That will go out with two pledged meetings.
We just do the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Article three, approval of the agenda. So, second, we have motion and support, all in favor. I oppose, there are none motion carries. We are for approval of the minutes of the February eight meeting.
I'm going to approve, but I just wanted to make another congratulations right now that Brian is no longer really the intro. lighting director of the notes. Congratulations, Brian.
Your motion and support, all in favor. I oppose, there are none motion carries. Congratulations, Brian, welcome officially on board. Thank you. Article five, this is where we take your time to acknowledge any visitors who wish to talk to any part of the board about any items that are non agenda items. The public, so we don't come up to violence. Anyone would like to speak.
There is not currently anyone raising their hand.
All right, we will move on to article six, which is case number twenty-two dash thirty-seven four-four. All right.
All right, so the applicant here would like to construct a personal twenty-four wide yard sign above ground pool located in front yard. So this lot here is technically a three lot, it's a little bit of unique lot, and it has frontage on Cascade Road, but it's accessed by a service drive on the west side of the property there. So technically, it has two frontages, so both those areas are considered front yards then. And the zoning board, zoning ordinance requires that pools be located in the side or rear yard. So on this lot, it has significant limits where a pool would be able to be located. So it has been decided rear yard, and it has a jack close to the ten feet, but it is not compliant. So on the site, it was admitted, but the building permit will show in a setback approximately sixteen feet from property line, eighteen feet to the side property line. With what, front yard buildings set back thirty-five feet per homes, when the structural structure is going to have a specific front yard requirement, because they are typically being sized weirder, it would be needing a ten foot. Through the site, isn't that again, it would be the fourth located approximately twenty-five to seven feet from that front property line, and maintain that end for a site of this effect. So it would be placed without leaving any areas, and it would be located on either side of the home. And I'll call it the south side of the homes where the driveways place access around it. On the north side of the home, there is the septic system intakes there. So it doesn't appear that there would be places for either in the side yard or the pool to be located. So again, it is a little neat that the homes are located across the service drive, all of the drivers come off of the neighboring streets. So the area where the pool is proposed would be adjacent to the backyards. So across the service drive, those are all backyards, you know, the street, and those homes, they don't have access to service drive over there. So they want to leave them, you know, in their front yard. Neighbor property in the south has a driving up Cascade Road, so once again, it'd be viewed in their backyard. Neighbor property in the north does have their property off the service drive. All the pools located as far as possible from that property, west corner of this lot. So this is a very unique request, I'm going to go back to two thousand and one, I didn't find any areas with plus four pools in the front yard. What we get raised at number of areas is for accessible buildings in the front yard. There's been unique circumstances that demonstrate that they're no longer alternative possible, but most likely to be the most similar case that we've reviewed here. So, when reviewing this, we look at the findings of facts located in the staff number there in the zoning ordinance. And at this time, there does seem to be a unique or exceptional circumstances. So since the properties of through lot was limited for the pool being placed, the drive is located in one side area, the septic tank is on the other. And the fact that the pool would appear to be in the rear yard's most favorite property, does appear that the variance would be justified, so at this time, staff are approving approval of the variance as requested. So a lot of the work front yard, they can just not, would locate at least twenty-five feet from the front property line, which would minimize the variance.
And questions of? All right, here now, um, you have to kind of build. You can speak your name and address.
Andrew King, I'll write twenty-nine seventy-four, Chris, thanks. Thank you for your time. We have some pictures here that shows, this is the property, just to the rear of the temporary firebit there would be where the pool would be going. As you can see, the two neighbors directly, you know, our property, those are their backyards. This is our back, this on that side of us also, because of the pool and same dude kids, everyone in it, we want to add, why I'm sorry, you through the pool from the there and where we access the home from that website. So, it's unique. We don't speak that at all. But I believe, right, as I said, the neighbor that's actually on the other side of the south side of the human. Approved, our neighbor ladder of, that my vision, and our neighbor directly to the east. At seven thousand Cathedral is also, give a lot of application for, so, I'll see if there's any other questions. Um, are you proposing, um, please, I would like to, according to Brian, like to go back to permission, uh, to get a fence variance because it is the front yard, it is a six foot fence variance, also.
Correct, the fences above four feet require especially these for rip of the plane. So you look for what that's by right, fields are four, I guess, move.
So there won't be any, yes, privacy.
Andy, the staff record one condition is the pool is located, is twenty-five feet off your line. Are you good with that?
Yes, and, um, I'm going to be like, oh, sectors, um, it has been ten foot, I don't know if you can see the pictures, but has been ten foot, there's power line, there is a power of five, that's up service drive. Um, so it'd be, it's a prebase, so it'd be ten feet from their closest one of our property, which, oh, uh, right, I, I, this, hundred.
Okay, so you're good with this condition?
Yes.
Thanks. All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I just say, well, Jeff, just wanted to say, thank you, Brian. He was scared of that, he's very involved, always, and all my questions, he's a lot, he's good, so I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, we did receive two, um, letters from neighbors, uh, seven thousand Cascade Road. And. I think there's a lot of this on the subject. And Veronica. Well, should I, for a while. Uh, in favor of record as well.
I made more than one public.
Second, we have motion and support, all in favor. I oppose, there are none, we are. Again. Any comments, concerns?
I'm going to close public hearing.
Motion and support, uh, both voting, all in favor.
I.
Uh, both. During one, we will re-.
Well, we really appreciate, as always, letters of support for neighbors. And there are obviously several exceptional conditions that support approval of this variance. Um, this is a very unique property, unique situation, step, and nice job of highlighting the exceptional conditions and unique circumstances. So that I make a motion to be approved, uh, the variance with stats, uh, condition.
Your motion and report, all in favor.
I.
I oppose, there are none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On article seven, case number two, death, three seven oh five. For one, OLC.
Here they have, also, a very, you know, by the joint ordinance, requires only half garage that minimum set at ten feet from her side property, where the pool will turn blind between the two sides of others. We have the house currently in a setback of approximately four, let's see, on the north side, and twenty-seven and a half on the south side, so as it is, the house is currently legal, not formally, because it's north. And I need to require, so here they have, is requesting the, in the actual report, to put my twenty-four foot cash carport, south side of the house, resulting in a thirteen foot setback on that side. So the carport still requires a variance, so even though it needs that minimum ten feet, total side, there is a setback, then it's below or about twenty-five. Uh, so the total, which would be approximately just over eighteen feet, once the carport is there. So currently, there is no garage or other structures, so vehicles located on the property. Um, a lot of the houses located on it, it's narrow, the width seventy feet, our current minimum width is a hundred and ten. There are a few similar size lines in the year, but I got a view and goes, it doesn't appear there are a few or more similar that are on the side, where it's set down. But there previously wasn't, on the property, it was a small location, after a few years ago, it was sort of a major senior renovation. And while the consent, the intent at the time was reflected, so it would be helpful if that can confirm whether that we, therefore, we will be setting the things, and we just want that one. We got it, it's one reason, a huge. Those cases, they're usually either maintaining an older, not controlled setback, or the really exceptional circumstances. So here in this case, given that there's no, currently no garage on the property, that the carport would be replacing one that's previously located in the same location. Uh, the fact that the home is already not performed, we don't have a lot, of those carports, still need the middle of ten point side yards setback. The variance is justified, except for the complete removal of the variance that was posted.
Thank you, Brian.
Will we have to like come up and see?
Uh, Dustin Carpenter, um, representative of eight twenty-six point up, and I'm a builder that's going to be potentially doing the carport corn. And, um, I think there's some pictures in the packet of the original home with the carport guy in, carport is indeed, it'd be the exact same size of the original one, the carport, on the home previously. And the owner took it down himself, he didn't realize that he was going to get into this thing all the time performing, so, I just said, man, I wish I would have got that, just re-reserve it, so. Um, you know, it's exactly the same size, I mean, he's, he's did a tremendous amount of updates to the property, uh, and also looks far superior than what this picture's. And I'm guessing you probably look a lot better than you'll look to. You know.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we will.
I've got more to go, more to go in bulk here.
Motion support, all in favor. I oppose, there are none, we will do. Any comments in public? On Zoom, if I need to give, you know, to read it.
I did not, yes.
Nothing on Zoom, nothing was coming. That's probably what could be almost. This is to close publicly. With motion, second quarter. That'll be good. Uh, motions for both public hearing, all in favor. I have opposed, there are none, motion carries, bring back the tourist support.
Yeah, again, this has so many exceptional conditions, there are a lot, there was a former carport that existed there for a long time, which, you know, we, we grandfathered in. And the situation was created when the house was built, so there is a lot of justification for this variance, you know, I said, for setting precedent, but, but that. This clearly, um, it has the unique situations and circumstances, so I'd be very much in support of it. With that, I make a motion to, to approve, uh, staff's recommendation.
Second, we have motion and support, approval recommendation, all in favor. I oppose, there are none, motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, we will move on to article eight, case number twenty-two, dash thirty-seven, oh six, Cascade Charter.
Let me know when you want them on your desk.
Okay.
Here they have, it's a question of approval from the zoning board appeals to allow for the construction of the fire station that is essential public service. This is a very unique one, so I'll walk through this here, but section four twenty-five of the zoning ordinance considers this use as an essential public service. And grants the zoning board feels the power to permit such a building to be constructed in the zoning district in township. As part of their review, the zoning board must find that such huge height area and building structure, or use as design erected and erected in landscapes to perform harmoniously with the general architecture and plan of such district. So that it fits in the general area. So in doing so, the DVA performs a site plan review of the essential public service. And this is the same process that was used when fire station two was built on a butcher pad. Um, so here, the project will include removing the existing building on site that has fire station one, and the township offices, and constructing a new fire station that will get a little over seventeen thousand square feet in size. And will have twenty-four parking spaces on the site. Uh, so this is a simple sidewalk along four hills that have that extends from the property to the north. Uh, it does not continue to the south to complete our commercial, the commercial area, which I see sidewalks, go over property line, not three one. Here at this time, there is no sidewalk on the south side, and there's some geography issues, so that's why they're continuing. Um, if there is further development in south, and they want to see that into you in the future, and the township should be able to, ability to do that. So this building will break this on, and it appears that it will conform with the general architecture of the building, that does meet all the one setback requirements of the B two zoning districts, which is located. The applicant is requesting a taller height than what is permitted, uh, the maximum height in B two district is thirty-five feet, and the plans show a training tower of the height forty-seven feet. Uh, the rest of the building does meet the height required, so it would help to hear that they have to explain why that's additional height is needed for the site. Uh, so the plans, they show two driveway accesses out the door hills, those are in the same location as the existing site. Uh, they are narrower than what the zoning board requires, requires a space of three hundred feet in the situation, there's space of one hundred fifty-seven feet. Uh, but again, they're in the same location that the current site suffers, and there's a kind of grandfathered in there. Uh, and then there is the unique use of the site as a fire station that was required, these two edges and exits. Um, and then the headcount of the listeners has provided a preliminary sign up, patient, uh, they want to give a final approval there. Uh, regarding the locations and also the drainage, and garbage over there. So there's a cell tower located in the northwest corner of the property, uh, the plans show a five foot tall retaining wall, currently that, um, is flat in the park west, so it should be determined what kind of access needs. The tower will need to have, and the horse and the box in, which retaining the wall. So a comprehensive landscaping plan is included, that has landscape screening on three sides, north, uh, east and west. And on the south side, they're maintaining the existing trees there as long as it's kept covered. And then a photometric plan is also listed that needs, how much of regulations? Uh, the township engineers reviewed the plans and their comments are in packet, there were two minor items that could be to address, and I did, um, address those later in the week here, so they get signed up for margin here after that as well. So at this time, staff are recommending approval of the new fire station, uh, with the four conditions listed there in your staff reports.
Question, Ryan? Will you have the light come on?
Good evening. Uh, your name, please, sorry, and that's Tracy. I represent the Alcan, the Cascade Charter Township, fifty-nine twenty title, right, in southeast. Uh, I appreciate you guys taking the time tonight to hear the case. Um, I've done what any great manager does, I've brought a couple people that are way smarter than I am to talk to about, uh, the project, some of the variances that we're asking for. Um, I do want to note that this is a project that's in culmination of about, uh, four years of hard work, and probably fifteen, twenty years of, uh, software before that, so we're really excited about the project. Um, typically for a township project, we try to ask for as little variances as possible, um, so we made, uh, the team go back to the drawing boards a couple times, uh, when they came to us with things, and they thought we should ask for variances for, and we said, no. Apply, uh, with our ordinances, so the ones that we are asking for, um, I think are, are very reasonable, and our engineer tops that. Also want to note that we did design the entire project, and we started our ordinance as well, so, um, the ordinance that puts it down there, which I think is going to be a great thing for the township. Uh, puts a lot on us, on our developers, and that was appropriate for us to be the leader and show, uh, being the first project to come to, so. With that, I'm going to turn over to the chief majors, and here, I would like to talk about the project.
Okay. Um, before we start that, one quick question for, uh, you as the chief, as this station is dominant on the surface, where will be it go? And in general, are you going to be servicing this area with temporary services, or is it coming out of the?
We are going to temporarily relocate to, so we get, these currently off like your, our guys, what's about? Mile and a half, two miles south, uh, we're at just off Thirty-Six Streets, the big FedEx building, uh, if you're familiar with that, it would be, yeah, the two minutes. So it changes our response in the graphic, uh, a couple of days, so we will be staging, uh, in this area, there.
Thank you. All right, with that, good reading. Good evening, that means John, I'm trying to do more, three, three, five, five, evergreen, right? I'll let the chief major talk, back to the tower, maybe just a little bit of background, a lot of door hills, hopefully, but on, it's pretty, pretty good, so, great, great changes, you go down the bottom plan. Eventually, there's like a big creek down there, so the drives are there, existing, and they're kind of strategic, because there's a, existing shared drive, more secretly up, on the page there, modifying that to make it more perpendicular intersection versus, kind of amel skew, it's throughout, oh, excuse me. But the southernway drive really can't change, this, if you go south, it just keeps dropping, dropping, and then it makes it so steep up to the, where the engines come out of the, damn, rather than just moving more. And moving the northernly driveway to the north, uh, which is problematic for our shared driving user, because they're on one hill, so, we're really pretty, pretty stuck, not much. Then the sidewalk right now kind of has a, kind of an awkward jog up into the site, and we're proposing to stop it there right now, again, because of that, so. It, we don't want to promote people on a bicycle, or anybody to kind of zip it down, or have it, or stop it suddenly right now. Normally, we would look at all this to try to get this sidewalk to sound properly, but it would fall right behind road division's guardrail. And it ended up with a problem, drop, it would repeat, so, by cutting it a little bit to the north there, it lights itself, the sidewalk, so, it doesn't make sense, but if the road commission, you know, why, maybe in the future, that's what makes sense, that whole part. Kind of purpose there. Those are kind of the two major ones other than the tower. To speak about.
And. So on the, uh, on the host tower, uh, it's, it's, I guess, multi-purpose, uh, on the one gives us access to be designated, which is where, uh, we located. We don't have any ability, uh, in Cascade Township, uh, to train, it depends on training, high rise, stand by operations, so any, any building of all three stories, which, as you, your, as a standby, required, uh, to be able to put fires out. We don't have the ability to train that practically, so you do a lot of hypothetical training, and if I was, if there was a great instruction, I would give the manager a try and do, uh, some of the training practically, those, uh, systems. Uh, so I have the obligation to provide training for my guys, to make sure that they can, they can put those fires out, so this would give them the ability to do that. It does have a training stand by, that there is several small floors, and opportunities to train your assistant, uh, manager. You can't throw anything above the twenty, the ladder, it's the building, every time, uh, we would put it against the fire station, station two, that might not like, it's a little crash, right? So, just for something simple, just throwing up the stage matters, we don't have ways. And then in special library, uh, window windows, and there's search, roof operations, high annual rest, by space rest. Uh, these are all things that I require to provide in the town to residents, as a, as a, as a skill standard, like firefighters, they have, just a lot of that to train, I think, it's just safe. So these are all, uh, really unique and, and good things that we can incorporate into, uh, it, it does have a nice aesthetic too as well, and also give the city, like, dry out. When there is, uh, the whole sound reaction that, uh, which right now, you just kind of spread it out, uh, in the bays and, and face of space, so these are all. Items that we can't do currently, that will be able to function to, uh, we do, there are various. Whatever.
Chief, do you have any issues with the conditions that staff has, as up there, I didn't see any, but I just wanted, there are four conditions, no, no, it, it don't make sense.
The key, I think, for the future too, uh, obviously, we all, the township as a whole, is going to grow, so, this is big. Having to have a trade at this point, just have to train for that future, is a, pretty important way. I guess one of the questions for staff, are we anticipating then, with removing, um, so much elevation, are you getting rid of, like, the yard raise program, or is that relocating?
Yeah, so our intention is to relocate the yard raise program, uh, it's very popular, so we're certainly looking to get that right. Um, it was actually originally done down at the recreation park, um, we would like to keep it there, we talked about going to station number two, but it doesn't make a lot of sense, because that's actually in the area we were anyways, so people are, want to keep it kind of in that, uh, for restricted area, so. Uh, we'll probably look at, uh, red park first, uh, we actually have a good partnership with a wild church right now, uh, we're allowing us to do the cascade cleanup day down there, so, and we have even the partnership opportunity as well, but, uh, the way the, uh, building will be set up now, just not conducive to hosting the yard raise program.
Which is that, duration for demolition, I would.
If approved, uh, tonight, and if it goes in for tomorrow, is approved, uh, bid should be back August, it settles in the crowd, potentially in September, with a twelve and thirteen month, uh, scrub, so a move in date, uh, fall point three.
One quick question, changing for elevation from existing rate, how is it proposed, to how, how, you're taking the site now, how far? It's a good question, uh, I see, one, two, three, four, five, I have hope, life, give or take, so, I guess, you're eight, eight plus minus square feet, or? We're ready, elevation. Yeah, it's coming, we moved it around a bit, because every time we move it over, other shifts, but, we have rated down, uh, but I do recall, uh, we tried to lower the two dry quick greens also, so. Uh, fortunately, wanted to more intense, uh, transform, uh, power, this diagonal of itself, I was, we're only able to drop that about one percent of the grade, so. And then we're able to drop southern driveway, one percent, so it's probably above foot, is the building patient, now, but it actually translates to a lot of dirt, at the line perspective, because. Right now, water flows, say, through part of the building the most, it doesn't really create round building, so, by us lowering it foot, we're also kind of blocking degree come down, so we're kicking out a lot of turtle, it's crazy, very, very. Do you have any impact coming from the south tower with putting our, your paint wall? Where are they, yeah, that's, this is rough, uh, they seem very, they can't, or try to, so, just. So I, I can't understand, Brian.
I will, I will say that our contract does require that we provide twenty percent in access, so, it doesn't define what that access is, um, but we've always had, we're going to be partners with that, and we'll make sure whatever, uh, designed it there. Will use that requirement.
Yeah, the person, I move on to public hearing. Second, we have motion for, for public hearing, all in. I oppose, there are none, open for public comment. On Zoom. Or in the public.
Has people on Zoom, but none of them are currently raising their hand.
Move to the public hearing.
Motion is for post-public hearing, all in favor. I. Oppose, there are none, motion carries, we will be back, mission, or discussion.
Well, couple of quick comments, obviously, just for the, the section four twenty-five, um, the essential public services, we could obviously approve for that, but obviously, all the other reasons. For the variances are very justified, I also wanted to note about the height, I mean, there's a lot of good reasons, and training for the grid best, that, that chief pointed out, but also. But also, what we typically look at, when we look at other residential partial areas that have height restrictions, is because we're concerned about blocking light or circulation, air circulation, or, you know, view, and that doesn't come into play here at all, we're not blocking anybody's view or or uh light issues, so uh obviously, for the for the reason of training and aesthetics, it, the tower makes a lot of sense, but also, it's not violating reasons we have uh height restrictions in certain areas.
Yeah, I agree with you, the the tower itself, like I said, is is critical to the township by the tool, so that being a essential service. It's my personal opinion that that has the most capability going as high as it will be for future.
With that, I move to uh with the staff's conditions.
I have one on the for there, sure, I have questions for Ben, we stopped a little bit of the land speaking, and this was the morning to some of the smaller structure perennials.
Yeah, so there there's, we're certainly going to be all of the uh the the major landscaping that's on the plan, um you know, came to light during our final review that there seems to be about a hundred thousand dollars over probably perennials and stuff in there. Um so we might not, you know, have, you know, if you look at all the individual perennials, uh we might alter those somewhat, but all of the landscaping is out of plan. And required on the movements.
Yeah, that's one of that, you know, that the media's upset. Um the staff respect, and I just want to see everyone on the edges of the right thing, because there's a lot of struggles right next to the building that are required on the work. And so those are, we moved that later. It means we are, so that's one of the. Anyway.
Yeah, I just continue to support.
We got a support, uh all in favor of the motion.
Hi.
All opposed. During none, motion carries.
Thank you, Brian, we're John, chief, Ben, you've really been at it for a long time.
Thanks, John, good job.
Uh nine and any other business. Now we'll go into our. The motions. Motion's for adjournment, all in favor.
Hi.
Oh, there you go, we are adjourned.